And the second item, discussion of possible action to request the West Contra Costa Unified School District, WCCUSD Board of Education to reduce the size of the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Madam Mayor, briefly. This item was added to the council agenda at your last meeting at the suggestion of Councilmember Dan Romero for, to look at an issue that was identified. Our local school district has been successful in passing bond measures for facilities as required under the education code. They have formed a Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. Councilmember Bill Kelly is a member of that committee. There's additional information attached. There's a requirement that the boards be, oversight boards be at least seven members, of which there are five designated representations, but this current committee is nineteen. So, the issue is raised as whether a body of nineteen can effectively function and whether the city of Hercules should perhaps request the school district to consider the Board of Education of the school district to consider reducing it to provide for a smaller oversight board. This is an item that was put on your agenda in order with all the council to discuss whether you'd like to proceed with this or not. And to the extent I can, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I think also Councilmember Romero, who had suggested this be added to the agenda, probably has some additional information to share.
Councilmember Romero?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I've been to several meetings and I've heard different council members in the last three years that have attended CBOC meetings. I know three or four members on the CBOC and it just seems that it has become frustrating to have things occur. And when you look at the list, there's nineteen people on this body. State requires seven. And I understand that, you know, the school board wanted to make it a little bit more open, but when you have nineteen people, you tend to have a lot of opinions. And the, when you have $1.6 billion worth of school bonds, it, you know, this, this board has to go through, try to figure out, are the bonds being spent correctly? Are they being spent under the bond itself? Was it spent correctly? They're having to go through the audits, make sure those audits are being written up correctly. And so, there's so many different phases and, in this one councilman's opinion, I think that maybe at nineteen, it should be reduced. And also that the seven, that if they chose seven, that those seven people, not necessarily, yes, there's certain guidelines, but those seven people should have accounting principal background. You go to some of the meetings and, you know, people are saying, "Yeah, I like the way this building looks." Well, it's not about how the building looks. It's about what was the cost of that building? Our, one little, small example was recently, we had a tour of the new Lupine Hills, I mean, Aloney. And the toilet dispensers had to be changed because the ADA bar was set at the same height as the toilet dispensers. Well, in my mind, that, it was a change order. It was $1,900 for six changes, but I think that was more, had it been, I was in construction. The construction manager should have said, "Wait a second. That's either the contractor or the architect or somebody, okay?" And it, maybe it was the architect that put it at both the same height. That's a small little thing, but those are the type of things, you know, this committee can be asking. And, and it just, you know, there was 200 change orders the other night that they were going through for that body. So, I'm just, sometimes we have to have these discussions. And it's nothing about the school district, but maybe in our city, we can start that and have this discussion just to find out is, you know, what our public wants to do, maybe get some members of the public to come out and talk about what they've experienced. But all the members there are working hard and, and, but when you see, when they're showing up and maybe they're getting one or two things done that night, you know, I think the last meeting was, well, it was a four-hour meeting, volunteers. So, it's a tough go for those CBOC members. So, maybe councilman, or maybe councilman Delgado would like to say what he's seen.
Councilmember Delgado, do you have any comments or questions?
I went to, I went as representative one time and they were very, it certainly couldn't be described as open arms when I showed up as representative of Hercules. They pointed out right away that I hadn't been officially approved by the, by the, by the board. And so, I, I just took a seat and I listened. And then I watched them as they trounced over the Brown Act, adding things to the agenda, voyeurizing things without having it fully vetted. And the meeting started with a rant by one member for ten to fifteen minutes and then he walked off, saying he wasn't going to participate anymore. It's, it was a very frustrating experience and I, and I, and I agree with Councilman Romero that everyone that was there wanted to do what, what was asked of them, which quite simply was, what are the funds being spent on? Was it appropriate? They never, when I was there, I was there for three hours, they never got to that question. They, they went on to different things. And unfortunately, I, it's just, it's great to have such a wide, diverse opinion on any board, but unfortunately, because it's so large, I, I don't know how anything ever's going to be done on that board. And they actually have just one purpose and they couldn't, they couldn't even get to it. I think, I've had a frustrating experience. I listened to Councilmember Romero's experience. I'm sure we're going to hear from Councilmember Kelly. I just think that if, you know, we spend a lot of time at meetings outside of what's here and frankly, I don't think our participation is, it's, unfortunately, I don't think it's worth anyone of our council members' time at this point to continue to participate, participate with this board because I think it's ineffectual and flawed. So, and I, I hope that it, it serves a very important purpose and unfortunately, the one time I was there, they did not get to it. So, I would like somehow to work with them to try to see if they could come with a more effective way of, of carrying out their mandate.
Okay, Councilmember, thank you very much. Councilmember Kelly, did you have anything to add?
Oh, yes. Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, I submitted a report, a report to the Education Subcommittee of this council on April 22nd. And what I asked for in a four-page report is if we have a discussion about what action we may take. Somehow, that seems to have gotten limited down to just the issue of do we want a smaller I agree with what's been said and Secretary is sitting here, no desire to mean Mr. Collins, but the truth of the matter is that the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee of the West Contra Costa County School District is almost fatally flawed. It's totally ineffective. It's incredibly dysfunctional. We go there and we sit for two hours or longer. There is one subject we're supposed to be dealing with. That subject is, is the bond money being spent in a manner which the bond allows? That almost never comes up. We talk about the design of the schools. We talk about, we go on tours supposedly, but we're going to projects that have been finished outside of ours where we don't see what the bond, what are they doing? When we get our, a look at the change orders, it's a hundred or 200 change orders at a time. We're not getting anywhere. And the bottom line is, the reason I wrote the four-page report and submitted it was the citizens of West Contra Costa County are not getting what they're paying for. It's that simple. We are supposed to be making sure that this money is spent appropriately. We're not supposed to be worried about colors. We're not supposed to be worried about the quality of materials. We're supposed to make sure that what they spend it on is what they can spend it on and nothing more. And we sit there for hours doing other things. Now, yes, I agree that the size of this committee is too great. The problem with just cutting it down, there's four seats that are, or five seats that are required to come to certain categories and two others that are at large. If we reduced it to just those seven, some of the people who we would be putting out, if that were to happen, are people who are working hard to try and change the status quo. So, we would lose that. So, I don't know how great a solution that may be. I'll give you an idea. I got an email this afternoon. I wasn't here for the last CBOC meeting because I was in Southern California at my mother-in-law's funeral. And I find out that it came out during the meeting that a member of the CBOC is employed by a contractor who works for the school district. Now, I'm not 100% sure whether 1090 goes that far or not. I'd have to do some research on that. But as I've said many times, when I first started a, a public life, when I first started the practice of law seventeen years ago, my mentor was a guy who'd been a Jesuit priest and then became a lawyer. And he said, "If it doesn't pass the sniff test, don't do it." And having someone who's employed by a contractor, who works for the school district, a member of this, and he happens to be a great guy and very active, but the fact of the matter is, it doesn't look right. It stinks. And then we find out, according to the emails I've gotten, when the chairman of the committee brought it to the school district, the school district said, "That's your problem." Well, some of the flaws are, I mean, maybe intentionally. The law that establishes Citizens Bond Oversight Committees says you must have one, it must be seven people at a minimum, and these five categories of people must be on there. And you must do these certain acts. It does not, it sets a limit on how long you can sit on the committee. It does not provide any mechanism for removing someone from the committee. I've spent hours researching the law and I have not found anything in the law that provides anybody the authority to move, remove a CBOC member. I think that may have been intentional when I think of the fact that in our society, when the executives appoint judges, those judges are very hard, if it's at all possible, to take them out. And that's what we say that, we're supposed to be overseeing this committee. I think the biggest change I would like to see in this committee, and one I've talked about since the first time I got there, when we need legal advice, our legal advice comes from the school district's general counsel. Now, stop and think about that. We are supposed to oversee the school board and their lawyers telling us what we can or can't do. That seems to me like a facially imperfect situation. It seems to me to be within the clear definition of what I read in the Rules of Conduct for Lawyers in this state, to be a conflict of interest. And again, it just doesn't pass the smell test. We need an independent lawyer. Now, I will tell you, I had a face-to-face conversation with Mr. Charles Ramsey back on Memorial Day. I told him I thought we needed an independent lawyer and he said, "I agree with you, Bill. I think you do. I've always wondered why you don't have one." He was concerned about what the budget may be. He was going to bring an item forward. That is yet to happen and I doubt with his interest now in running for an outside office that it will come from Mr. Ramsey, but he told me he absolutely agreed. This body is, is not providing a benefit to the parents and the citizens of West County. We've got people on there who are really wrapped up in making sure we have a great educational system. They want us to have just the greatest schools we can have and they're really caring about the kids. Unfortunately, the legislature chose in drafting the law which established these committees to leave those problems with the school board, not with this committee. This committee has a very focused, simple task and we need to find a way to be doing just that. Now, as far as whether we should participate or not, if we walk away, that's going to be one last body that sends somebody up there who's trying to do the things they are called for. It's not going to help. It's going to make it worse. I don't know what the answers are. My experience tells me it starts with sitting down with the powers that be and having open discussions about what things we can do to make it better. But this committee cannot continue on the basis it's going and ever accomplish much that is going to be of help to our citizens. And I'm sorry to have to say that, but that's my considered opinion and I've talked to people who are on the committee before, I go in years back, and some of them just quit. They said they couldn't do anywhere. And they were complaining about the same things. So, it's clear to me that there's been a longstanding problem that needs to be addressed. And if we can do nothing else tonight, let's get, let's take the tablecloth out, the elephant in the living room. You know, it's not a table, it's an elephant.
It's a discussion and brainstorming.
Yeah, thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Councilmember Kelly. Vice Mayor McCoy, do you have anything to add?
Actually, I just have a few questions. And one of my questions may be someone, something that, I don't know who might know the answer, but how did it get to be nineteen members? I mean, if you look at who they're recommended by, it looks like they started off with the original five and then they gave every city, every, you know, everybody an opportunity to appoint somebody, which, which, do you know the answer to that? And has it always been nineteen or has it expanded over time?
My understanding is it's been nineteen from the beginning. Now, yeah, there's several possibilities for that. I grew up and worked in San Francisco, for the city of San Francisco for a long time. So, I'm familiar with the trick of making the board so big they can't do a damn thing. And I don't know whether that was in anybody's mind or whether they wanted to be, have a wider group of people represented. But nineteen does seem an unwieldy number to try to do what we're doing. And the thing that bothers me is we've got each member of the school board having the right to appoint one voting member of this committee. We're supposed to be overseeing these people. So, they're going to tell us who their prosecutor is. We have people who, I've done some study lately on these bond issues, where the money came to fund those campaigns. I've only gotten up to about 2,004 because it's extensive and I'm finding hundreds of thousands of dollars coming from the teachers' unions, the building trades and the like, all of whom benefit from this and they've got the right to appoint one of these members. Now, this is a member from the trade unions.
Okay. So, we can only speculate. Maybe someone can inform us on that?
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
The bylaws for the CBOC, which are available on the school district site, I mean, the school district's been very good about being open. There are things you can find on their site, but their bylaws say that it was intended to be from 15 to 22. So, that, that's inside their bylaws. That's what they designed. So, yeah.
And then as far as what Councilman Kelly had said, section eight of their bylaws talks about, "No employee or official of the district shall be appointed to the committee. Additionally, no vendor, contractor, consultant of the district shall be appointed to the committee. If while serving on the committee, a member becomes an official or an employee of the district or becomes a vendor, contractor, or consultant of the district, their membership on the committee shall cease immediately." It's right in the section eight of the bylaws. So, again, you know, this is not intended to put down the district. It's just intended to have a discussion to see if we can formulate some sort of a letter that sort of hits on what we feel as members of the council that represents the 25,000 people here in Hercules. I do know that currently, Councilman Kelly is the only elected official on that body. The other cities are so frustrated, they will not send one of their council people.
Okay.
So, it's, I mean, we are not the only city that's frustrated. When you see that you're not even getting your elected officials from cities being sent, then, then there's something there.
All right. Vice Mayor McCoy?
Thank you. I guess, you know, as you mentioned, the bylaws say 15 to 22. So, obviously, they, the school district intended for it to be a, a large group. Now, personally, I think that's a lot of people to try and organize into discussing anything, but you know, perhaps the school district had something in mind as to how this would work or why they wanted it to be so large. And before we, I would like to see that before we move forward with drafting a letter, that we get some input from the school district as to why they set it up this way and, and how, can I finish?
Yes. Can you please allow Vice Mayor?
Please go. I'm sorry for the drawn response.
The other thing is, is as Councilwoman Kelly pointed out, he sent a letter to the Education Subcommittee and at the end, he recommended that the Education Subcommittee discuss these issues and including seeking public input and after doing so, make appropriate recommendations to the city council. And I was curious if that had occurred and if public input had been sought as well as, yes, Education Subcommittee?
This is the first I've heard of it, so we can, what occurred on that?
It was brought up at the last meeting.
At the last meeting, yeah.
Well, so it's not the first you've heard of it.
Well, I'm just saying. I beg to differ. It was brought up at last meeting and I pointed out, I'd asked for it to go to the Subcommittee and Councilmember Romero and Councilmember Delgado said, "No, bring it right to the council."
Right.
I see. That's a recommendation.
The original recommendation to you two was...
I think you can tell from our comments where, what we would have thought, would have done.
Okay. So, can we allow Vice Mayor McCoy to continue? I've heard from her three, if you're ready.
I guess my point is, is that I would like to see the part about seeking public input regarding this issue as, as well and get some of that back to the council for recommendations. I'm sure there's many people in the community that have...
And just, it was announced at the last meeting. It was agendized and it's here on for public comment as well.
Okay. And we do have some speaker cards. We might get some input tonight.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
To Council, to Vice Mayor McCoy's, the, I don't think the school district is the one that set the bylaws, okay? The committee worked, I think, maybe three years on the bylaws. So, the committee itself was the ones that worked on it. So, I don't think it was the school district alone creating these bylaws.
Okay. But whoever created the bylaws, maybe, you know, there must be some reason why they chose 15 to 22. And it would be interesting to hear
Yes.
why their bylaws are set up that way.
Yes.
And also, to your point, the, the part about how it appears that there are some members, according to their bylaw, who, who's, who should be excused from the board.
Okay. Anything else, Vice Mayor? Yes, but before I go to you, I'd like to have my own comments too. Yes. First of all, I was, I was very concerned about that memorandum that you provided. I, I did not read it. Someone emailed it to me from the, this Citizen Bond Oversight Committee instead of getting it from the city. So, that one was one thing and I know that everybody else seemed to have read it. So, that's one concern I had. Another one too, I would like to hear an opinion from our, maybe from our city attorney. What is our authority as a council to dictate to a regional board or a separate board on how they should conduct business? How would you feel if, let's say, a city next door tells us how we should conduct our, our meeting? So, I would like to know that. Also, I cannot sign a letter because all of this is second-hand information. I've never been to a Citizen Bond Oversight Committee. So, how am I to pass judgment on a committee that I don't have firsthand knowledge? I mean, yeah, I know, I heard it's dysfunctional, it's flawed, doesn't pass the smell test and all that, but really, what is our role as a council in demanding change from another committee? What should the procedure be? So, reading the code, the state code of education, it looks like the West Contra Costa School District is not obligated to even have a representative from the city council. So, what right do we have demanding change? So, that's one thing I want you to think about. So, in a nutshell, I am concerned about overstepping the city's authority in a possible action to direct the CBOC to have less members. I don't want to stir up more dysfunction by having a letter from us. Maybe we could direct our representative to put an agenda for CBOC for discussion and then maybe tonight, we could brainstorm to tell him what to tell them, our suggestions. And so, that is my concern. What as a council should we do? And, and I think that's what I want to see before we write a letter is, I'd like to have, would you know, could you address my question?
Madam Mayor, yes. The CBOC is a creature of state law. The city council doesn't have any authority to direct the appointments beyond what's already granted the city of Hercules under the terms of the bylaws. That said, you have several courses of action. I mean, you could approve sending a letter that would be in the form of a request. It certainly couldn't, it could be a demand, but it certainly isn't anything that you could enforce on the school district or the CBOC. Your alternative proposal would also be workable and as where you have, you direct the, the current representative who sits on your council to pursue it via their, their own agenda.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes. I think Council, wait. Councilmember Kelly was first, yes.
To clarify a couple of things, my apologies to my colleague, the Vice Mayor. My strong reaction was, take a look carefully, take a look carefully at the law. The only authority the school board has is to appoint, period. Their, the appointed board which oversees them, and after that, they lose any authority of them, as far as I can find. And I've spent some hours researching the law. There's a provision in the bylaws, for example, it says the CBOC can remove its own members. I find no support in state law for that. It appears from what's in state law that once somebody's appointed by the school board to the CBOC, that they're there for the term. And I'm sure that we could find somebody, get a judge to remove somebody for good reason, but we're supposed to be overseeing the school district to keep, to continue to go to the school district and say, "Please, please, we need these things." Our job is to say, "We need to get this made fresh till we can do our job." I feel at this point, after some discussion, and I apologize, I don't know, I sent my memo to the two members of the Subcommittee that were asking to act and not to anyone else. And I don't know who else got what where. I didn't circulate it until after the last meeting, when it was agreed to come up. Then I got copies to the clerk and I had some citizens who asked for them. I got copies to people who asked for them, but this council had already agreed that we were going to have a discussion. So, there was no intent to not include you in the communication, Madam Mayor. I feel strongly after discussions I've had, that the most important thing that anybody can seek and sort of to get improvement with this committee at this point is for the committee to get independent counsel, truly independent counsel. That will help in one, helping us, our members learn what the, what the Brown Act means. I mean, it got so bad one night when Councilmember Romero was there, he had to leave the room before he started shouting at people. It was so ridiculous, so ridiculous.
Oh, Councilmember Romero.
So, anyway, that would be my suggestion.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Romero?
Yes, Madam Mayor. First of all, I think Councilman Kelly also mentioned it, but he did forward that to a couple of members. What occurred was I, I forwarded the email to City Manager Biggs and to Patrick, you know, City Attorney Patrick Kane. And so, I think because of what was going on last week, it didn't get to you. But I mean, you know, I tried sending it to the city manager for distribution. So, you know, we, we can't send it amongst us, so I went through the proper thing. As far as, you know, demanding, I don't think anybody on this council is going to demand anything of the school board, okay? We are, we are here as making suggestions. Yes. We, we don't as politicians demand, but we can suggest. And I think signing a letter or whatever we do is a strong suggestion. It is not a demand. As far as you signing a letter, you're the mayor and you represent the council. So, if the council agrees to a letter, then as the mayor, that's, that's your function as a mayor to sign that letter. So, but I think the main thing is, again, is that I'm not here to demand anything or to prosecute. I'm here to have the discussion for our 25,000 citizens in this city so we can get, you know, some sort of opinion. I do see three members, three citizens that I know that have attended these meetings and hopefully, they have put a card in so we can hear not only from the council, but from three private citizens that are very active in the CBOC.
Okay. And before we go to the speaker cards, Councilmember Delgado?
Yeah, I just want to take issue with, I, I didn't see us demanding that another agency change its rules because we happen to be one of nineteen, nineteen of its members.
Then what's the letter for?
I'm sorry. And I believe that the, that this, the way that this originally was couched, this item, was that to see if we were going to be willing to spearhead or lead other cities in helping to see if we could identify anything that we believe was a flaw and perhaps suggest positive changes with, in conjunction with other cities, other councils. So, I don't think any, I mean, as, as you stated, we obviously would take umbrage if somebody demanded that we change something.
Right, yes.
But I don't think that was any, I don't think any of us were suggesting that. So, I don't, I don't know where the...
I am sorry, I got, I got that impression that we were going to tell them to reduce the size of the, of their body.
And I think Councilwoman Romero mentioned the other point I was going to bring up.
Thank you. Well, I'm glad to know that it's just a suggestion from us.
Well, and it also goes, well, one, we can only do this in conjunction with other communities... communities. So, if, if we're going to go it alone, I don't think this council should spend its resources and time in, in going after this one issue, but only if we, if we agree that we could work with other, other cities that participate with the CBOC.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
I was just going to say that, that I agree with you regarding the demand, that it's completely out of our jurisdiction. However, I, I do think it is appropriate, and whether it's on our own or with, working with other cities, or on behalf of the community, should we get the community expressing, which is why I'd like to seek more public input for that, is that we, we have the, you know, the, the obligation to express concerns.
Okay.
Express concerns is how something is functioning, and perhaps offer suggestions for how it might work better.
I like the express concern and suggest. Thank you. And now, we have some speakers from the public, and the first one is Anton Younger.
Anton Young here. I've been on the CBOC the past four and a half years. Served as the City of Hercules representative for two and a half years when I was a member of the Education Commission, and one of those commissioners was your CBOC representative. Want you to know that when I was on the committee, they had 21 members, and we reduced it to nineteen. Want you to know that the bylaws that you're referring to of the CBOC are basically modeled on the Board Policy, 7214.2, which is really the governing document. So, the bylaws are consistent with the Board's adopted policy on this topic. CBOC, in my opinion, is dysfunctional, does not operate as a legally required oversight committee for the $1.7 billion of school construction. It's not a public relations entity for the schools. It's supposed to be an oversight committee, as Councilman Kelly has pointed out, whose sole purpose is to oversee the expenditure of the funds to determine if they're spent in accordance with the law. Nineteen members is too large. The five members, in my opinion, appointed by the school board, is a conflict of interest. Those five members essentially offset the five legally required members and balance them out and makes them equal in authority and power. Some of the members are on the CBOC to lull their own construction project in their communities. They have no interest in oversight. Cannot function with a committee of nineteen with a constant turnover and a constant change of the committee. I did an analysis of the past two years, of the membership of the committee, and in the past two years, there's been thirty, there have been thirty people in the past two years that have served on that committee. They come and go almost every month because the terms are based on when they get appointed. So, you have members going off, members coming on. It's a constant turnover. There's no consistent training program. They don't know what their function is, as Councilman Kelly has, has pointed out. They're vacant positions. Some positions have been vacant for a year. Vacant positions. I recommend that you pursue this matter. Think it's important.
Thank you, Mr. Younger. Next speaker is Charles Cowens.
Hello, my name is Charles Cowens. Is this on? Yeah. My name's Charles Cowens. I'm the Secretary of the Bond Oversight Committee right now, and I've served on the committee since 2004 years now. But, of course, I'm not speaking for the committee. The, the chair actually wanted to come, and she would have just spoken as the chair, but she had a personal obligation that prevented her. But, so I just want to throw that in. The, the two main things about this that I like are that, first of all, that you are paying attention. The problem with the, part of the thing with the Bond Oversight Committee is that, that there's no one really looking at the Bond Oversight Committee. There's an audit that happens every year for the bond program, and that kind of touches on the Bond Oversight Committee, but it's, there's no real focus on looking at exactly what the Bond Oversight Committee is doing and how well they're doing from an external body. And I really, so I really appreciate the fact that you're even discussing it, even if you don't do anything, the fact that in a public forum, you're talking about these issues is, is very helpful. And the other thing I'd like to commend is that the proposal here is, is a very specific proposal. It's very easy to get up and people have all kinds of, you know, they bring up anecdotes about problems they've had, and then there's, sometimes people say they need to fix things, but I like the fact that there is a specific proposal here to focus on reducing the number of people on the committee. And as Mr. Kelly pointed out, in the past, I've supported that idea, and I think that's something that should continue to be encouraged, because it's sort of a common sense thing that would make it easier for the committee to function. But, you know, I also feel kind of, as a member of the committee, I feel sort of put on the spot as if you're criticizing me for doing, and I've been, I feel like on my part, I've been struggling for a long time to try and make the committee like that. So, I think that's an issue that you might want to consider and talk about, is that other committee members may become more defensive, because, I mean, you make an effort to point out that people actually are trying to do the right thing, but if you want reform, you want, it should be based on a, you know, trying to make it a little less personal. And so, one thing I would like to bring up is that there have been, the committee was sort of in a certain phase when I came on, where it was sort of not doing too much. And a lot of the problem was, from my point of view, was the fact, the problem of staff, the relationship with the staff. We have the weird situation where we're like, as if the Public Utilities Commission had PG&E providing its staffing. So, the over, so even though staff members are trying to do, you know, they're not going out of their way to be evil, it's just that there's a, there's a conflict of interest that's sort of inherent, because we're, it's unlikely we would ever have our own staff. And sometimes the, in the past, the staff were, I consider, much more obstructive of us being able to do things. They had their own interpretation. I think Mr. Kelly kind of touched on that when he was talking about the independent council, where we weren't even allowed to say that we had a standing committee, so that we would notice something as, in order to follow the Brown Act. So, and in terms of getting things on the website, there's, historically, there have been a lot of problems, and what's kind of funny is that now that you're paying attention today, there, the relations with the staff have actually improved a lot. Dr. Harder has decided that we should decide whether something is following the Brown Act or not, and we've had a lot more success being able to schedule subcommittee meetings, including a change order subcommittee meeting, and use school facilities, and have much more cooperation with the staff. So, that's something that's improved. Another thing is where I kind of disagree with Mr. Kelly, is that I feel like we, we do have the power to remove members, at least if they're not showing up, or at least declare. I've decided to change the bylaws to propose that we simply declare a position vacant, and then the school board can fill it. So, no one's removing anyone. You're just declaring a vacancy, because that was a real problem in the past, and it actually affected the City of Hercules, because there was a member of the board who was kind of, wasn't clear whether she was really on the committee or not, because she wasn't showing up, and then she showed up. And one of the things that we've improved on is we have a lot better consistent attendance, I think, so people are paying attention. What else did I want to bring up?
Well, thank you very much.
Oh, we're over?
I appreciate your comments. It's good to hear from someone actually on the board. Yes, we have two more speakers.
Okay.
Can we finish the speakers? Okay, Mr. Cosentino?
Hi, Mayor Rivera and members of the council. I've attended a few of these meetings, and I would like to say I agree that we need to reduce the size, that nineteen's large. I disagree that, that the minimum of seven positions is sufficient. I believe that each city or high school area should have a representative on the committee, and so they could be part of the oversight process for our schools. I understand that the city council has a high workload, and, and then there's the politics and all. I think a lot of school stuff, I've noticed the, the school, the council kind of wanting to distance themselves from it. And this is, I've been observing this for a while. And, well, let, we need to make that happen. Maybe it is a problem. And, but so, I have some suggestions, okay? For the, this new funding mechanism, we have the Local Control Accountability Plan, and there's a committee, and you actually have representatives from each high school area that are on that committee, and so that would, then you would have a Hercules rep. So, that's something to think about. Also, just as food for thought, if we had award elections or district elections for school board trustees instead of the current at-large elections, would that be a solution? Because then we would always have representation, you know, so maybe that's something to think about. I think, you know, so, let's see. The other thing to think about is that the law, it's, look at the law, look at the language. Laws are often kind of flawed in how they're written. And so, ask yourself, what should the oversight of the bond program look like? And, you know, kind of take it from there, because I, I look at some of those positions that are in there, the legally required one, one says someone who's a parent and, and also happens to be on the PTA or, or school site council. Right away, when I see PTA, I always get suspicious, but that's just me. And, but still, why not, that's saying they want someone maybe from the community. Well, this is a, a large community, so, you know, it, it seems like that the law was headed in the right direction, but then they leave us to figure out how to, how to make it happen. Lastly, some of these issues that were brought up already tonight by, like Councilman Kelly, I already filed a, you know, a formal complaint. I, I didn't want to have to do the complaint process, but it was, but I did last year, and I brought a copy of it, because I thought it was strange that there were two union reps on the Bond Oversight Committee. And so, the response from the district, and I'll send that to you guys, I don't have it with me here tonight, was no, that's perfectly acceptable, and they did change it. So, anyway, but I'm glad we're having this discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cosentino. And you have a copy of your complaint that you want to share? Okay. Next speaker is Peter Chow.
Good evening to the members of the City, Hercules City Council and members of the Hercules City public. My name is, my name is Peter Chow. I'm Supervisor John Joyas, appointee to the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, and I represent his, his area of the West County, which includes the unincorporated areas of El Sabranti, Montalvin, and Kensington, areas that would not be represented if Hercules's recommendation were to go forward, that only cities would get representation on the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. I'm here to refute the claim that the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee is dysfunctional, because it's actually not. Since I've been on, since I've been appointed to the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, we've actually achieved a great deal. We've achieved enforcement of the local hiring program, which ensures that local, that, that the bond money is spent on wages here for West County residents, to employ West County residents in the bond program. We've also supported and voted for the expansion of the audits, something that was, something that was voted on by the Board of Education at the last Wednesday meeting. We've also subdivided ourselves into a subcommittee, so that way we can, that way we can focus on our specific focus areas. For instance, the Audit Subcommittee can focus on accounting and audits, while the, while the Change Order Subcommittee can focus on change orders for the schools. And, more importantly, we have a representative from the Building Trades, because no one else in that room knows how to build a building, except for the Building Trades representative. That's the reason why his expertise is so needed, because he knows how to build a building, and he can affirm or deny whether these change orders are necessary. As a result, we're delivering on the promises that we made to voters, which is building state-of-the-art schools for taxpayers. That's exactly what we've been doing on the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, which is overseeing the bond money. As a result, I refute that claim that's been repeated over and over and over again in this room, that the CBOC is dysfunctional, when in fact, it's not. It has been very effective at achieving its promises to taxpayers. Also, I have practical concerns about reducing the size of the CBOC. The reason why we need nineteen members is because we are a $1.6 billion bond program, which means that there's complexities that requires different levels of expertise. This is not like a city council that only has five members. We need diverse interests on the board, because we need diverse areas of expertise to oversee this bond, to oversee this bond money. Also, one of the practical concerns that I have is who do you cut from the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee? For instance, like I just said, I represent some areas of the unincorporated areas of West County. Are we going to deny those unincorporated areas' representation on the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee? That's a, that becomes a civil rights issue, in my opinion. Lastly, lastly, I want to point out that the school district has been working in collaboration with the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee. One great example is this, is the Board of Education expanding the scope of the audit, exactly like the way the CBOC recommended in the last Board of Education meeting. Secretary Cowens from the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee wanted me to mention that we're also having a joint meeting with the Board of Education. The Citizens Bond Oversight Committee meeting, despite your past impressions of it, is functioning effectively and delivering on, on its promises to voters. As a result, I think that, I don't think, I don't agree with the, with this recommendation to sign a letter suggesting changes. We need these members. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chow. Councilmember Delgado?
I just wanted, I wanted to. Joint meeting.
The next meeting is September 24. Okay, joint meeting, yes.
I, I was just, I, the Secretary of the CBOC, CBOC was cut off, I just, I believe that he had more information that I wanted to hear when the red light goes off. So, I was hoping the council would join me in exceeding more time to him, so he could finish his comments.
Do you want to?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay. If that's the case, then, Mr. Cowens, could you continue?
I just have some responses to some of the things that you were saying, just really quickly, because I don't like having more time. Mr. Delgado was talking about the problem with showing up at the meeting, I mean, and feeling kind of out of place, but that's part of the problem, that's one of the issues, is the school board appoints people. We don't know, we, we're often not informed when someone has been appointed, or when, if they're in the pipeline to be appointed. So, we are, and we don't live in Hercules, most of us, so we have no idea who you are when you show up. So, I'm, I, we could have been more polite, but I'm sorry, so I'm sorry that happened, but that highlights a kind of problem that I think we're trying to improve, which is that people don't realize that the school board is responsible for appointing people on the committee, and we're, we receive those people, and people like me claim that you can declare a position vacant, and Mr. Kelly doesn't agree with that, but, but that, that's only when after you're on the committee itself. We're, so that's why, you know, I'm sorry that you were flustered by that. The other thing is, the committee member issue that people have been bringing up is, I, I don't know exactly what, all I can report is what the chair told me, which is that someone found out, discovered that he had, this person had mentioned something that suggested that he might not be eligible to be on the committee anymore, and so that issue was raised with this, the, the district, because really, we, you, because the actual appointments are usually something we think of as being part of the school board's role, I think the, the committee chair felt that, that she should consult with the superintendent, and what she told me was that it, she did, I mean, this is, I can't confirm this, but it seemed, from what she was saying, this isn't the case, that he doesn't actually work for a vendor who has a contract with the school district. So, all I'm saying is it's, there's some doubt about whether that's true or not. And, well, let's see. Oh, and, and then the September 24th joint meeting, and?
And, and where, and?
Oh, it's at the Facilities Operations Center.
Okay.
I don't have the exact address off the top of my head, but it's.
Check, we'll check the website.
It's way out there, Marina.
Okay.
Yeah, and I just want to stress, too, that, that you, you should come to this joint meeting and speak as individuals, even if you don't have a consensus as a group. And, and, you know, I mean, just to reiterate, I, it's really useful to have this discussed in a forum, because the school board actually doesn't really talk about what the CBOC should be doing. I mean, basically, we kind of run off to the side, which is not a good sign in itself, but to have a public body with people who are elected officials who care about representing their, their constituents, who are willing to take some time out to talk about this, that's really a useful thing. And, and this is televised, so people can watch it and listen to your comments. So, anyway.
Thank you so much. It's good to hear input. Yes, Councilmember Kelly, did you want to add something?
I'm glad we're having the discussion.
I'm glad we're having the discussion. What this committee does is important for all of us, not just because we're talking about over a billion dollars of public money, but because we're talking about making sure that public officials are behaving in the way they're supposed to. We in Hercules have had great examples of what happens when public officials don't behave the way they should. And that's not meant to be any kind of an indictment of the school board. It's just the state used the word independent when they established this board. They emphasize this is an independent body. And it hasn't been, in my experience in the last five months, we haven't been really functioning that way, but I think this may be a beginning to have these discussions, to start to find out what the public concerns are. Yeah, Mr. Chow respectfully disagrees with me, that's great. You know, I mean, that's, that's what makes it life interesting, is, you know, we're not all holding the same opinions, you know. Mr. Cowans sees some of the things different than I do, and that's great. But I, these discussions have to be had. My concern, as I sat there, was that these discussions weren't occurring. And I'm glad that we're taking a leadership role in getting them discussed, and I can hope that the other cities will, will follow that. And we'll continue to dig into this and try to come up with some collaborative way of making this work better so that the citizens can be assured that the money that's being spent, isn't being spent improperly.
Yes. Well, thank you for introducing the topic and that's how change happens. Councilmember Romero.
Thank you, Mayor Devera. Yes, I wanted to comment on a couple of things. The, having a parent, you have to have a member on the committee that's a parent of a student in the district. You have to have a member that's on the PTA. That is state mandated. So that is something that the state requires. As far as Mr. Chow stating that the school board voted on expansion of the audits, that was only after an article was written in the paper that called out what had occurred. And then the school board decided to go ahead with the expansion of the audits. The school board has basically been ordering the audits. The CBOC members wanted an expanded audit so that they could find a little bit more information. And so they finally did that. I can only say that, I'll tell you some of the dysfunctions. There was a meeting, that was a joint meeting of the CBOC and the school board, about a year ago, maybe, just maybe less than ten months ago. There was actually two agendas. The CBOC chair had her agenda, disagreed with the school board, and the school board insisted that their agenda was correct. It was a CBOC meeting. So that is what these members have been functioning with. They actually ran two different meetings that night. When you don't have elected officials, you don't have anybody there that understands the Brown Act. It is true, Councilman Kelly stated, I left that meeting that night because I was so upset because there was things that were going on that any council member, any administrator, somebody like Mr. Biggs was there, would have seen the glaring faults in the Brown Act. And I left because I didn't want to interrupt that meeting, because that's what we as elected officials do. We don't interrupt other people's meetings, okay? I walked out. That's how bad it is. This committee needs to have a lawyer on hand. There have been things that have been going on for a long time, and you, you have to have counsel there. You have to get a legal opinion. There are too many things that occur in this committee that require legal opinions and you don't have it. If you're not going to have it, then the main administrator should be there. There's usually somebody from the school board that's there. So, again, this is not a prosecution of this committee because these are all volunteers. But I think it was nice to hear Mr. Cowans say that we're the first municipality to have this discussion. Hopefully, we can have the other cities. Later on, I'm going to ask that the mayor bring this discussion item up with the West County Mayors Association. So that'll be, that takes it to the next step. So that's what the mayor's group is all about. You have five city mayors. This is a perfect situation to bring it up, to sort of find out. We're not here to prosecute the school district. We're here to make sure that the oversight of these school bonds, that the public is getting what we paid for, that there is no misuse of these funds. And I think every member of that CBOC is there to make sure that that function occurs. And this city, this council, wants to make sure that we give you guys the proper tools to get that. And that's all we're asking for.
Thank you, Councilmember Romero. Anything else?
I, we've spent a lot of time on this.
So maybe, maybe we could.
I did, I did want to say a couple things.
Okay.
Mr. Cohen's, I wanted to apologize. I reflect on my comments. You and the other members are volunteers, and you especially, I noted, worked very hard to prepare yourself for the meeting. You came prepared with, as I recall, suggested new bylaws that you wanted to have adopted to help promote the system. And I, and the members that I sat next to honestly wanted to be there, they were prepared as well. Unfortunately, they weren't able to effectively interact with the rest of the committee, just because it's so large and you guys were working on different issues. And, and the fact that you went, you've gone through four years of that, I'm sure other members have, and, and other members, I don't want to besmirch your, your volunteerism. I just think that, that I think all the members would want something more effective. And that was my impression, that, that it's just not working. I know, Mr. Chow, you stated that, that it's an effective meeting. I believe that there's three out of these five council members have a different impression. And I hope that you might, might see that, maybe there's another viewpoint to this. I, I think the main crux of the problem that I saw, when I, it's very palatable that there's a big division between the board and the CBOC. And fortunately, I have to agree, the CBOC, I don't know where the resources would come from, but they need to have their own legal counsel. As Mr. Chow pointed out, you know, if you need an expert to look over the work orders, it probably should be somebody independently hired by the CBOC, as opposed to putting a member on there who has connections to possibly other vendors. So it seems that if you need expertise, that the board should be given the resources to get that expertise, not just simply to create a large enough group to gather that expertise. So I would hope that, I, I think, I would like to hear the other communities' input as to, as to these issues.
Okay. I think we've heard from everyone and I just want to have some direction now from the council on what to do, what our next step is. And Councilmember, Councilmember Romero had a very constructive suggestion of bringing this up in our next agenda for West County mayors.
Yes, Mayor Devera, I would, I would like to suggest that this be brought up as a subject. I don't think you can add it on the next agenda, but maybe in October.
Yes, I have to ask other mayors if they're willing to.
And I'll be glad to attend the meeting at the end of this month to, to mention my thoughts on, on why. If the council thinks that we should have a meeting of the education subcommittee so we can have more residents attend and speak, I would be open to that also. But I, I do want some sort of letter going out. And I don't know if maybe after, you know, there's been a lot of ideas going on here, but the asking of the reduction is just so that there is a manageable group of citizens. I don't think that removing somebody off the board of one area will be a civil rights issue. But there has to be a discussion about this. If the discussion starts here and goes to the other four cities, then we can talk to the city, the supervisors. It's nothing that's going to happen in a month or two weeks. It takes time, it takes discussions. And I think tonight, we've had a nice, healthy discussion. And, and, and I truly am understanding of what the citizens are going through on that. I, I mean, I don't want tonight, first of all, we are not demanding anything of this school district. And secondly, I think the council as a whole all understand that we are happy that the citizens are giving their time and volunteering for this. So this is not an attack on the committee. This is frustration from members of our city that attend. There's a couple of more members that are, that chose not to speak, but I know there's one that is very frustrated with the audits and what's been going on. And the not, the performance audit is one of the most important parts that this body has to look at. The performance audit is the auditors giving their speculation of what they've seen. And that has been one of the, the key points that a citizen from Hercules has been harping at. That citizen was a city auditor for Richmond. So he knows his business. He has been doing that since the beginning of the year. Some people called him a madman. He's hitting a home run because he knows what he's looking for. And those are the type of citizens that we want in this group, bringing up those key points so that we get the proper understanding of how the, of the funds are being spent.
So you're suggesting that we have draft a letter and then send it through our representative? Or, you know, what is your?
Well, there was a lot of things that we discussed tonight.
Right. So how do we draft that?
I don't, I don't have all my notes. I don't know if there's maybe a way that the city clerk, I mean, we all put my notes together and we put our notes together. Maybe, I'm sure there's maybe five key things that occurred that we discussed tonight that we can formulate into a letter.
Yes. Councilmember Kelly, what would you suggest?
Well, I'm going to come back to my original suggestion. I, I would like to see the education subcommittee have a meeting where we get for as much input as we can from the public that's well advertised, that's on this subject. I'd like to give Dr. Harder an opportunity to give us his views. You're right, nobody's here. I know that the four-page report in some way sounds condemning. I was merely trying to provide my colleagues with a view of what I have seen in the six months that I've been going. And it is very, very frustrating. My wife will tell you, I get home the nights after these meetings, it's two or three hours before I can calm down. It's, wow. So I, I think a subcommittee meeting with the public access is the place to begin. I think at the same time, we should ask our mayor to advise the West County Mayors and Supervisors Association that we've had this meeting and that we'd like them to follow, follow suit and see if we get some collective ideas.
I could see if I could, we could put an agenda. We're, we are hosting the West County mayors, so I'll see how we can do that. Yes.
No, I agree with Councilmember Kelly.
About the subcommittee?
About the two, two choices.
Okay.
I don't, I don't know if it's time yet for a letter.
Yes, that sounds good. We want the input from the public. Vice Mayor?
I, I agree with that as well. I think we need to.
Okay.
Gather some more information.
Great.
Get some more public input.
So first, I hear two concrete suggestions. The education subcommittee, which is composed of Councilmember Romero, Councilmember Delgado will meet and invite the public and, and also members of the school district and the citizen bond oversight to get input. And then maybe we could have more concrete suggestions there.
Mayor Devera?
Yes.
So these are three things that I just jotted down that I think we all agreed to.
Mm-hmm.
Well, maybe agreed to. Reduce size of membership.
Okay.
Independent legal advice and a dedicated staff member. And I think, from what I heard from citizens, the members of the CBOC, those three, I think, if the school district.
There are resources. We have to find out, too.
Well, there's resources. So, first of all, independent legal advice is somebody independent from the school district, okay? Somebody that is going to look directly at the bonds, the functionality of the CBOC, and is going to be there for them, not representing the school district, okay? That is key. Because whenever there's an opinion, it's going back to the school district. Well, that's, these are, people are saying, hey, there's a problem here with this item of what we're seeing. And when you're asking the school district legal advice, you don't know where it's going to. So independent legal advice and then a dedicated staff member is so, when you have a meeting, you don't have two different agendas that you're running. Imagine us sitting with the school board and we ran two separate agendas. It, it doesn't work. And they ran a three-hour meeting like that. So.
So if no one objects to his three items, then you could bring that up in your subcommittee meeting, maybe? Okay?
I would ask that, would this also be brought up when you bring up at the mayor's West County?
Yes, I will ask other cities if they're willing to have a discussion of that. And then with their individual councils, too.
Correct.
Okay.
If I could just get some clarification?
Yes.
Only because I think that's important. When the education subcommittee meets.
Yes.
Someone talked about that being well advertised. Can you, you know, it'd be good to understand from the council what you mean by that. Do, normally, we just post that agenda? We could put it in the city manager's biweekly report?
Yes.
I wouldn't anticipate a mailed notice because of cost or a newspaper advertisement. But I just want to make sure that we meet your expectations.
I'd probably, you know, announce it in your weekly, biweekly news, put it on the website and try to reach out.
And we, we could do a press release, too.
Yes.
And the subcommittee members are Councilman Delgado and myself. And.
Yes.
We will try to.
So, yes.
Get a date that we will meet, so you can.
And something, and then a time that the public can attend, not the middle of the day, okay?
Of course not. Because we can't, we want people to attend.
Okay, okay. Sounds good. It's very.
I, I've been to some of those subcommittee meetings years ago that were at ten and got locked out, so.
Well, thank you to the council. This has certainly been a very productive discussion. And hopefully, it will bring about some productive, you know, positive change. Okay. So, do you want to take a break or move on?
Let's push through.
Okay. Oh, yes, let's have a five-minute break. Thank you.